A little bit late, but we're going to go ahead and get started here tonight. So thank you very much, everybody, for coming out tonight to the Sibolo City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025. We have a full council here tonight. Councilman Hicks, would you please lead us in the invocation?
Yes, Mayor. Dear Holy Father, thank you for today. Thank you for the much-needed rain we received over the weekend. Just thank you for being you, God, that you love us all, all the same. I just want to lift up in prayer all those that are suffering and need your word and your guidance. We just want you to watch over and protect our first responders and our military personnel and their families. And may we make decisions that are pleasing to you this evening. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So we have a very special presentation to award to two of our accomplished city council members. This is the presentation of the designation of Certified Municipal Officer. That's the CMO title for both Councilman Hicks and Councilwoman Sanchez-Stevens. So if you could please join us at the front to take a couple of pictures, and I will hand out the plaques that we have for both of you for this prestigious accomplishment. Thank you. All right. We have a few people signed up for Citizens to be Heard. I'll go ahead and read the procedure. This is the only time during the city council meeting that a citizen can address the city council. It is an opportunity for visitors and guests to address the city council on any issue, to include agenda items. All visitors wishing to speak must fill out the sign-in roster prior to the start of the meeting. The council may not deliberate any non-agenda issue, nor may any action be taken on any non-agenda issue at this time. However, the city council may present any factual response to items brought up by citizens. Attorney General Opinion JCO 169, limit of three minutes each. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body. Remarks may also be addressed to any individual member of the council, so long as the remarks are about matters of local public concern and not disruptive to the meeting or threatening to the member or any, I'm sorry, any attendee, including city staff. Any person violating this policy may be requested to leave the meeting, but no person may be requested to leave or forced to leave the meeting because of the viewpoint expressed. This meeting is livestreamed. If anyone would like to make comments on any matter regarding the city of Sibolo or on an agenda item and have the item read at the meeting, please email citiesecretary@sibilotx.gov or call 210-566-6111 before 5:00 PM the date of the meeting. So we have, let's see, five people signed up to speak, and we will start with the Miss Sibolo Pageant. We have Teresa and Ashley Jones. Come on up. Welcome.
I've been in Sibolo a little over 15 years. I'm not sure what the Miss Sibolo Pageant was projected before 2024, because I was never a part of it. But, and I don't understand or see what the relationship was with the city of Sibolo. I have no idea. But since it has restarted in 2024, our focus is to promote and encourage self-esteem, self-confidence, and being very engaged in community service. It's not about the prettiest girl, who can dress up the best. It's about the girl next door. We equate Miss Sibolo to the Girl Scouts, but with a prim and proper spin on it. My daughter, Ashley, was very shy, and last year she participated in her first-ever pageant, and it truly was a blessing building her confidence, because she gets name-called at school. She's been called the monkey. She's been called the N-word. She's been told that she'll never be nothing because of the color of her skin. She's been attacked, been all kinds of stuff. She's been bullied. Ashley, if y'all agree, now, she's my daughter, but she's a beautiful young lady. And so when we found out about the Miss Sibolo Pageant, I was actually at Snap Fitness, saw a flyer, went home the next day. It was two weeks before it's supposed to start, and I asked her, hey, you think you want to do the Sibolo Pageant? And she was like, oh, well. And then she was like, okay, I'll do it. And so by her, by signing her up, it has truly built Ashley up. And I'm gonna let her speak. She didn't know I was gonna have her do this, but I'm gonna let her speak and tell them what, how it helped you.
It helped me because I used to be very shy, and I didn't want to talk to anybody, because if I didn't do it, I wouldn't be able to stand up here and talk to all y'all, because I'd be various here. But it helped me be more confident in myself and the way I look, and just me as a person.
Thank you, Ashley. So in order for our organization to be successful, we truly need the financial support from the city that prayerfully will be awarded via the grant we applied for previously. Ideally, we're looking for a partnership with the city of Sibolo, that this is something that we can do together in building up these young ladies who have the potential to be future leaders in our community. And so, again, Ashley grew by leaps and bounds by this organization. And again, it's not a focus on, I've told parents, if you want to do the glamour and glitz, and this is the starting point, so be it. But our focus is to really encourage these girls to see beyond who they are and be what they're meant to be, which is fearfully and wonderfully made. Thank you in advance.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you coming out here to advocate for the Miss Sibolo Pageant, and that is a very valuable program. I'm glad that we were able to reboot that program, or that the sponsors were able to reboot that program that kind of took a few steps back during the pandemic. And so I'm pleased to see that Miss Sibolo Pageant is back, and I've always been a big supporter of that, ever since my daughter was in the pageant, and also Joel Hicks's daughter was in the pageant before, too. And so we do have that strategic grant application that's open right now, and it's my understanding that the Miss Sibolo Pageant has applied, and so we will be awarding those in May, as far as dibbing out the funds for each of the folks that applied. But Councilman Hicks wants to say a few words, too.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just gonna say the same thing, that his daughter and my daughter both participated in that. In fact, his daughter was my daughter's little. That's how far back, I mean, and they're, my daughter's 21 now. But what I wanted to give you the factual, you asked about how it became, there was a couple of council members that decided to start that. It was Councilman Castro, and then Mrs. Schultz, Schultes kept it going. So that's how it became to fruition. It's, it was meant for, because Shirts had their Shirts Pageant, and so Sibolo, we felt that we needed to have our own pageant to participate in. And so that's how it came to be. And like the mayor said, it did fall off after the pandemic thereabouts, and it just kind of went to the wayside. So I'm glad that it's here, and I'm glad that y'all are participating and applying for that. But that's kind of a little background.
Thank you.
And you are.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks again. Appreciate it. All right. Next up, we have Joey Smith signed up to speak. Come on up, Joey.
How's it going, council? Just want to say thanks for allowing the people to speak. First-time caller, longtime listener. I was coming up here to speak about the ordinance that you guys have, number nine, about Grampys Pizzeria getting their beer and wine license. The reason I felt so obliged to come here today, I drove an hour from Austin. Aaron Graff, the owner of Grampys, I started working for him when I was 18 years old. I worked for him for about five years. He's a, he's a great man. He did a lot of great things for me. He really gave me the tools that I needed to become a productive member of society, and he's allowed me to live out, you know, my entrepreneurial spirit, and I'm hoping that you guys will grant him the ability to do the same thing. During my time working for Aaron and Kristen, both the owners, I've seen them give away tens of thousands of dollars to the community, and that was when we were working together in Shirts, so it wasn't quite Sibolo, but, you know, tens of thousands of dollars to the community in any way that you can imagine, whether it was football games or preschools needing sweet tea. No matter what it was, he was always there to help them, and I know that he's willing to do the same thing now. The only thing is, you know, a business needs to make money. It is a for-profit, you know, company. So I just wanted to come here and ask that you guys think about that and grant that. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Joey. I appreciate you coming out to speak on behalf of Grampys Pizza. And then just to let you know that we, there was a request for us to postpone the vote on this particular item, and so I just, I know you just said you drove from Austin, so I don't want to have you, you know, sitting around and waiting for a vote tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
But we will vote on this at the next meeting, which will be on the 13th of May.
Okay.
And so your thoughts were heard by all of us, and so we're going to take it to heart, what you said, and keep that in mind when the vote does come up on the 13th of May. So, and then you can also watch us on YouTube or on the city website, if you don't want to have to drive back down in a couple more weeks. But, but yeah, just thank you very much for your kind words on Grampys.
Thank you, council.
Thanks, Aaron. I'm Joey. All right. Next up is Maggie. Welcome, Maggie.
Good evening, council, mayor. Just a few items of interest. Physicians Premier in Sibolo would like me to invite you all on behalf of them to their Fiesta Metal Breakfast. It's going to be on the 29th of April, that's next week, from 8:00 to 10:00 AM. They're going to have food, limited supply of Fiesta Metals if you collect those, tours of their rooms and everything, but Jennifer would really like it if y'all had time to come out and have some coffee and some free food. Also, on the May 5th, we have our golf tournament. We have closed out, and now we're just doing the final details. A lot of fun things planned for Cinco de Mayo, and so hopefully we'll see some of you all out there as well. On May 14th, we have another Sibolo business opening up that we're going to be ribbon-cutting, and that's BioWorks. That will be at 2:00 PM on May 14th. And last, on May 20th, at our chamber luncheon, we are having Techstock come out to present. We actually have three presenters. Will is bringing some friends, because I'm sure they have a lot of projects and a lot of things to show us. I think he just did it for backup, myself. But if y'all can make plans to attend that, May 20th, our luncheons have been selling out pretty quickly, limited space, so please, if you want to come, go ahead and RSVP as soon as you can. And just a quick thank you to Councilman Roberts. Thank you so much for coming out to Century Communities and sharing in that ribbon-cutting, because I know it was, as Alison Hayward says, shibaloma. We're not quite sure where that line is, that Sibolo houses stop and Shirts houses start, but they were so grateful that you came out, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Maggie. All right. Next up is Kelly. Welcome, Kelly. How are you doing?
Thank you for having me. I'm just here for the leadership tour with the chamber, and so I'm going to observe today. Thank you.
Right. Thanks so much. Next up is Tim Weatherby. Welcome, Tim.
Hello, mayor, council. I just wanted to make a quick introduction. I work with Grant Works, and I'm now covering this region. I have been to y'all's council meetings, but it's been about 20 years. I used to give out the grants for the state. It used to be called the Officer of Rural Community Affairs, that now Texas Department of Agriculture has. I have come by, and I hadn't had a chance to meet the city manager yet, but things have changed around here in the last 20 years. It's a lot, a lot of growth. I did work for Encarnate Word on their planning committee back in the late 80s and early 90s, so I spent some time around San Antonio, too. Our company's number one grant company in Texas. We're now a national company, too. We work from New York, do a lot of big contracts down in Florida and along the coast, and just wanted to stop by and introduce myself, say hello.
Thank you so much, Tim. And if you don't mind, if you could please pass your contact information on over to our city manager, Mr. Wayne Reed. And, and things have changed a lot over the past 20 years, as you've said. We actually do have a grant coordinator now on our staff, which is a relatively new position. I believe that she's been in that position at least one, closer to two years now, and so that is a really good position that's brought in a ton of grants. And so I think that that's a position that you could work with to, to help us get, you know, apply for some of these grants and hopefully get approved.
We work with a lot of cities that have their own grant coordinators
Right.
in that position, and we do a lot of different work from what they do.
Okay. Very good. Well, thank you, thanks again, Tim. All right. Next up is an email read by Councilman Hicks.
Emails from Mr. Benson. Subject reconsider, reconsider, or consideration of reintroducing plan unit developments, PUDs into the UDC. Council members, during a recent planning and zoning meeting, the issue was raised about reintroducing PUDs into the Unified Development Code. It's been said this request originated from the city manager's, unsurprising perhaps, but I urge you not to move forward with bringing this tool back into play. Here's why. PUDs were removed for a reason, broken promises and cost to taxpayers. We should remember that PUDs were removed from the UDC because time and time again, they fell with, fell the taxpayer. Developers would show up with grand promises, the moon, only to deliver significantly less, leaving the city and residents footing the bill. Take a look around the town. The Santicos PUD is still not fully built out after years, while the development right across the street is thriving. It's not, let's not forget, we paid six figures for an economic development study that claimed we couldn't attract major retailers like Home Depot, yet Shirts across the street managed just fine. That study clearly missed the mark. Maybe instead of pushing for PUDs, the city manager should focus on managing the EDC, because as the same study correctly pointed out, you can't do both planning and EDC effectively under the same leadership. Negotiating, number two, negotiating a PUD depends on the negotiator, and that concerns, and that's a concern. Mr. Reed has personally told me that the PUD is only good as the people negotiating it. After three years of experience with Mr. Reed, I've seen no evidence of those supposedly negotiating skills. Quite opposite, on multiple occasions, we've had to override his negotiated outcomes to protect taxpayers from Green Valley Road Development to the property across from Steel High School. Number three, even if we were the right person, here's, he's already looking elsewhere. Let's assume, for argument's sake, that Mr. Reed was a master negotiator, it still wouldn't matter. He was recently one of the three finalists at a job in Cody, Wyoming. He clearly was one foot out the door. Why should we saddle the city with a major planning change like reintroducing PUDs that he won't be here to manage? And are we really confident that the next city manager will be any better at managing PUDs or negotiating on the behalf of the taxpayers? I strongly encourage council not to sway by lofty promises and polish arguments about why we need PUDs. Let's be honest, we have demonstrated.
All right. That's it for that one. Jeff, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'd like to respond to this. This is not the first email that Mr. Benson has submitted where he's disparaged someone from our executive team, the chief executive of our city. I have nothing but the most confidence and faith in Mr. Reed. He's been nothing but a man of integrity. What he inherited in this city was chaotic at best. I know he puts in the hours to get us on the right track. We still have a ways to go, but we're on the right track. Mr. Hicks, I would ask if Mr. Benson has something to say, he either come out here and state it himself, or have it read by city staff. It carries a different tone. When a member of council reads off a statement, it's almost an affirmation of the information contained. Of an example, I believe it was last meeting, I read off an email. Ms. Popham reached out to me. She requested me to have an email read, and I very explicitly stated to her, I will not do it if you call out or disparage anybody from staff or council. If that is the tone you want to take, you can do it on your own, but it's not going to come from me. So we need to do some self-reflection here on council with staff. Why wouldn't someone look for another job? Look at how we disparage our executive team. We had a member, one of our city employees, come to the podium to talk to us about our behavior. Think about how much courage it took for them to come up here and tell us that we are the problem. Unfortunately, we went into executive session, I didn't get to talk to, a chance to talk to that employee at the meeting, but I walked right up to her supervisor, and I told her, I want you to tell her thank you. I ended up seeing that employee a couple of weeks later, and I said, thank you. We need this reality check. We need to self-reflect on how we deal with people. We may not agree with everything, but that's great. That's why this government works. We have a council that sets a direction and a vision. We have a staff that executes that mission. Why would anyone want to come work for us if we are going to continue to sit here and disparage people that put in hours and hours to make this city on the trajectory that it is? It's not a fun job. I know he puts in more hours than most average working Americans do. We need to stop this. If Mr. Benson has something to say, he can come down here and say it himself. Thank you.
Could you have Donetta?
I would just kind of like to go along with Jeff here. We, again, Mr. Benson may have his issues with the city, and he has a right to voice his opinion, but he does not have the right to continuously, week after week after week, go after staff and have council read them. There's a reason, our policy says, send it to the city secretary, not to a city council person. If a council person gets it, we need to forward it to the secretary to read. But we need to, we need to, to stop this, as Jeff put it, disparaging of our staff, of us. We need to be better leaders about this.
Agreed. Thank you, Donetta.
May I give a response to that just as well? Although I do agree that we should be, this is multifaceted, right? Because if there is something that is happening with city staff, with a resident of Sibolo, you are pretty much saying that residents cannot come and express their concerns against any type of city staff. That's pretty much we're saying, broad stroking and saying that. I do agree that there shouldn't be any disparaging remarks. I'm just saying if it's Mr. McLaughlin, what I'm saying, if it's good for one city employee, it should reflect on all city employees. You can't just defend one, and then therefore just, so you're saying that residents are not allowed to come forward and air their complaints. I think that's a slippery slope that we should consider. At the same time, disparaging remarks from this, for the last two years, there have been plenty of disparaging remarks that were made against his council. Plenty. Engaged and probably invited, and I just think it's interesting that it's now, you know, a concern because it's reflecting on one particular person, or maybe two. So I think, moving forward, absolutely. You know, let's minimize those disparaging remarks, however, let's not cherry pick to whom it pertains to or not.
Okay. Well, we have a policy, and there will not be disparaging remarks tolerated. Go ahead, Katie.
I just want to say that we've talked about doing council policies. I've brought it up for over a year. This would be one of those policies for whoever's on that subcommittee to write. What is the process for having citizen letters read?
Okay. Yeah. We do have a process, which is to send it to the city secretary, and we'll be enforcing that moving forward. Next up is seven, consent agenda. All items listed below are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. Oh, six?
Yes. It was on your list.
Okay. I'm sorry. Okay. I didn't see it on there. Okay. So those are read by Valerie?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
The first one we have is from Jamie Speed. I believe this is an urgent matter, excuse me, that needs, sorry, let me start the timer, that needs to be addressed and a solution found. I hope this message finds you well. I am writing to express my growing concern regarding the safety issues on Rattlesnake Way in Sibolo Valley Ranch. As you may know, the stretch of road lacks stop signs or speed bumps, which has led to vehicles regularly speeding down the street, often exceeding 50 miles per hour in a 25 mile-per-hour zone. Given the number of children playing outside in our neighborhood, this poses a significant danger. Today, a devastating incident occurred where a dog ran into the street and was struck by a fast-moving vehicle, which then fled the scene. This could have been prevented had the vehicle been traveling at the speed limit. It is alarming to think that this could just as easily have been a child who wandered away from their parents. While the recent incident involved the dog, it serves as a painful reminder of the risks our children face daily. We are all too aware that it could easily be a child next time. This situation is preventable, and I believe we must act before a tragedy occurs. Despite numerous complaints to the authorities, my neighbors and I feel our concerns have not been adequately addressed. We are bringing this matter to the council's attention to advocate for our community safety. We urgently expect the implementation of safety measures to prevent any future incidents. Thank you for your immediate attention to this critical issue. We look forward to your response and action. Sincerely, Sibolo Valley resident on Rattlesnake Way. The next one we have is from John Morfitt. Dear council members, as residents of Saddle Creek Ranch, though living on Cowboy Knoll for only five months, we wanted to bring to your attention some of the following issues that should be addressed prior to the additional planned expansion. The new phase where we don't, I'm sorry, the new phase where we live doesn't have an alternative way out of Coy Lane to FM 1103. It has come to my attention that in Phase 1, residents were trapped and not able to get out onto 1103 because of a downed wire. Residents coming home had to park along 1103 and walk home back in 2021. A traffic light would also be prudent at the intersection of Coy Lane and 1103. Unkept vacant lots overgrown with weeds and debris. Broken and missing sidewalks in new section between completed houses and over culverts, overgrown and litter-filled drainage culverts in new section. Lack of green space park in new section on HOA property. No money put into new amenities in new section or given for old amenities to support additional residents. Thank you for taking the time and attention to these concerns. Respectfully, John C. Morfitt. Next one is from Gregory Schwartz. To whom it may concern, I am writing this email since I am not able to attend the meeting in person. It would be great if Grampys was allowed to serve beer and wine. Pizza and beer go together as well as peanut butter and jelly. I feel that this will also help their business and keep them in business, or at least in business in Sibolo. They make one of the best New York-style pizzas in the entire San Antonio area. Small restaurants are closing left and right. Why prevent a locally-owned restaurant from striving? There is a lot of competition for pizza in the area, not to mention Matanga's opening about a block from Grampys. Let's help this local restaurant stay open and stay local. Thank you, Gregory Schwartz. The next one is from Brett and Teresa Downey. Dear council members, we are sorry for our late email addressing our concerns over the expansion of Saddle Creek Ranch. We have been a member of this community for nine years. We have seen the original developers continually fail to do the things that they promised to do. We have seen them fail to protect the interests of the homeowners or the integrity of the community year after year. They continue to purchase more land and build houses to add to the community while not expanding any effort to maintain the empty lots they already own, and without adding community amenities or additional funds to upgrade the amenities despite the addition of more and more houses. We would appreciate city council working to protect the value of the homes that are, that are already exist in this community by extracting legally enforceable requirements to maintain their lots, include stylistically appropriate entrances. their lots, include stylistically appropriate entrances, and add appropriate amenities to maintain the value of these properties if you decide to allow further expansion. The members of the Saddle Creek Ranch community who are using entrances off of Coy Lane are also concerned about the lack of an alternate exit, especially in case of emergency. We have had homeowners unable to enter or leave the development when an accident on 1103 blocked Coy Lane. This safety concern should be addressed with the developer. Thank you for all you do on behalf of our city and our community. We don't know how many members of SCR would be able to write to you about their concerns, but we are active members of our HOA and our Facebook community. We know that our concerns mirror the majority of the community. Sincerely, Brett and Teresa Downey. The next one is from Amy Thomas.
Amy Thomas?
Amy Thomas. Dear Mayor Allen and city council members, my name is Amy Thomas, and I am a longtime citizen of Sibolo. I am writing to express my strong opposition to the request for a variance that would allow Grampy's Pizzeria to sell alcoholic beverages within 300 feet of a public school. While some nearby establishments such as gas stations and Walmart do sell alcohol near public schools, these are primarily retail spaces with quick in-and-out transactions. They do not encourage the onsite consumption of alcohol, nor do they create an environment where prolonged gatherings or social drinking occur. A sit-down restaurant that serves alcohol creates a different environment, one that may lead to a higher likelihood of alcohol-related incidents and reduce peace of mind for parents and school staff concerned about student safety. It's also important to note that the owners of Grampy's Pizzeria knew the existing restrictions when they chose to occupy that location. The rules were not hidden or unclear. Approving a variance now not only undermines the purpose of the ordinance, but also sets precedent that could lead to further exceptions, ultimately eroding the protections intended for our schools and neighborhoods. I respectfully urge you to uphold the current ordinance and deny this request. Our schools and our children deserve to be protected from environments that could bring unintended consequences to their daily lives. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration. Sincerely, Amy Thomas. The last one is from Brian Clu. Dear sir, I am writing to support having Grampy's to be approved to operate with an alcohol license. I feel there are many different, there are many nearby restaurants along Route 1103 and 78 that have licenses that Grampy's deserves to be competitive with equally. I regularly dined there and spoke to the manager a number of times. I feel that he would strictly adhere to rules and regulations required for a license. I appreciate your attention to this matter and hope you approve the license request for this business. Thank you, Brian Clu.
Is that it? All right. Thank you, Valerie. And I'm going to recognize Councilman Randy Roberts for a factual statement.
I didn't get a chance just a second ago, but I'd like to piggyback on Councilman McLaughlin here. We, as a council, have to do better. We, it's, it's quite frankly embarrassing. The, I have the utmost respect for Mr. Reed. He is, as Mr. McLaughlin said, he puts in more hours than, than anybody I know. It's, it's evident in the direction our city has gone, from where we were to where we are now. I can't think of anything that's not positive. And, and sure, I'm sure anybody that is in that mode to find something negative, you can, you always can. But without Mr. Reed, we would not be where we are now. I just want to echo one more time that he has my full support of the leadership of the city of Sibolo.
Thank you, Councilman Roberts. Next up is seven, consent agenda. All items listed below are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting held on March 11th. B, approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting held on March 25th. C, approval of the minutes of the strategic management workshop held on Saturday, April D, approval of the minutes of the special city council meeting held on April 8th. E, approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting held on April 8th, 2025? I think that date might be wrong, but F, approval of the minutes, I'm sorry, approval of the February 2025 revenue and expense report pending final acceptance of a city's financial audit for the 2425 fiscal year. G, approval of the February 25 tax, I'm sorry, check register. H, approval of the purchase of computer equipment and peripheral devices for GTS Technology Solutions through the Texas Department of Information Resources, contract DIRCPO 4839, DIRCPO 5096, DIRCPO 5225, and DIRCPO 4751 in an estimated amount of $76,792. And I, approval of the final plat of Saddle Creek Ranch Unit 9B. Do I have a motion?
I'm making a motion to remove I, please.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for approval of A through H minus I with the removal of I. Do we have a second?
Also, I need to pull item D, section, or number three on the, to have a typo corrected.
On, on item D, which is?
Right, it's the agenda minutes for April 8th meeting.
Or special meeting.
Or special meeting, excuse me. When it's referenced to Mr. Heinz, his name is misspelled, and I'd like that corrected.
So, we have a motion for A through C and then E through H. Do we have a second on that? We have a motion and a second by Councilwoman Cunningham. Please vote. I think Joel, Joel made the motion and Donetta added some information. And then Katie seconded it, so please vote on your screens.
Maybe.
If not, we can do a voice vote. It's coming up. It's okay.
Have a good one.
Okay. Motion carries seven zero.
Wait, wait. It was approval of the final plat of Saddle Creek that?
We pulled that one out, Joel.
And I want to table that for the next meeting, please.
It was I is what we pulled out. I and D. So, you want to table I and D to the next meeting?
Well, D can move forward as long as it's corrected. I, I just want to table that.
Okay. Got it. All right.
I'm making a motion to approve D with the corrections that Councilwoman Roberts outlined.
Okay. Please vote on that with the correct spelling of Terry's name.
Mayor, council, so I understand that Mr. Hicks wants to table item seven I to the next meeting. I want to remind council, it is a final plat for which we're under the shot clock. Staff would at least like to make a presentation on that. If a governmental body in the state of Texas does not take action within the limitation set by the state of Texas on us, a developer has the right to simply walk in, I'm simplifying this with a letter saying, you failed to take action. I have now an approved subdivision and they can proceed. So, I'd like the opportunity for staff to at least present and for any concerns by council to be discussed with us.
Yeah, I'll allow that tonight. If they want to go ahead and, if you want to have staff go ahead and present tonight and then we can make a consideration. Because Joel, if we don't vote on this, it's going to get approved either way. So, it's better.
I do have concerns with this neighborhood as well and with what's going on. I've been bringing it up for well over a year. A lot of the issues, we've had our engineer go out and look at the roads. The roads are already failing, and there's nobody, the roads were already cracked and failing before houses were built. There, I drove through this neighborhood this weekend, and there are several overgrown lots. The drainage area that the developer's supposed to be maintaining right now is severely overgrown. If we have a rain, there's no way anything can get through there. There's trash, the cracked ceiling on the ground, the tar, whatever they put on the cracks is all, it looks like it was put down too thick almost. It looks like gum, chunky.
And we will have Chris Otto speak to that subdivision and the planning staff, and then again, any council concerns?
Is this for D?
This is, this is just for D. This is to spell Terry's name correctly.
Sorry, I thought we already voted on that.
Norma?
It just says it all.
Okay.
It says it's one of the lines.
Okay. All right. So, six to one on D, and then if we could have staff go ahead and come on up, is that, are they prepared, Mr. Reed?
It's up to you.
For the Saddle Creek Ranch?
Yes. And then Mr. Otto would be available as well.
Okay. Hello, how you doing, sir?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Mayor, members of the council, this is a request for final plat approval, and as the city manager outlined, we are constrained by the state legislature's local, local government code. We are required to approve the plat once it meets all the subdivision regulation requirements, which in this case this plat has. This plat will be automatically approved on May 6th if council has not taken action by May 6th.
Okay. Thank you very much, Rick. All right. So, with that in mind, if there's any conditions that need to be added to the final plat approval with, I'm saying this to all the council members, those conditions can be added now, otherwise we're going to miss the boat. So, I know Katie, you've brought forth a couple of concerns. Did you want to elaborate on any of those?
Right, sure. And this is, this is for the entire new section, not just this specific area that's being platted. Several of the sections are already built, but there are considerable concerns with the condition of the repairs that were made. As I mentioned before, the cracks in the road, there is a lot of cracks for a brand-new street. I know our ground is terrible, everything shifts around, but for a brand-new neighborhood that is less than two years old, they have more cracks than my streets have, and my streets are a roller coaster. It's, the patching of it also looks bad. There's huge sections of the road that have already had to be taken out and repaired. So, there's huge squares of asphalt that have had to be replaced already. The maintenance of the empty lots is not, it's not being done. The drainage areas are not being maintained. There's one street that doesn't have any houses built on it yet, but it is a working street that people are driving on that does not have a stop sign installed. So, it's a four-way intersection, but only one of the ways has a stop sign. So, that's potentially a problem. There are sidewalk issues already as well as curb issues. So, I don't know if it's just this plat. I didn't go out with this map, and so I just drove the whole thing. But I do have a lot of concerns with that. I've raised these concerns since that very first section was built in the back, the new section with the streets. I know they've gone out and they've had them repair the streets, they've had them repair things, but it's concerning that this is still happening two years later, that this stuff is still, appears to be failing very quickly. We only get a warranty for so long once we take this stuff back. So, even if it's in good condition or acceptable condition, when we accept it from the neighbor, from the developer, we're still on the hook for repairing that, and we don't have the money to, these streets need to last. They need to last the length of time that they're supposed to last because we don't have the money to repair them in a shorter timeframe than that. We barely have the money to repair roads that need to be repaired right now, that are past that lifespan. So, at minimum, the code, the code maintenance for the drainage ditches and for the empty lots, that needs to be kept up. Speaking with the HOA board, they're very frustrated with some of these issues. If we could have another, I know we've met with them before, Mr. Reed, with the HOA board about their green space, but if we could schedule another meeting maybe with the HOA to discuss some of their concerns, that would be helpful. They are struggling with the developer. Some of this is not our job as the city to get involved with those kind of things. I understand that. But if there's a way that we can help or at least guide them or push, point them in the right direction for how to get that taken care of, that'd be great. There's a lot of conflict right now where the developer's telling them, no, this is your, this is your problem, HOA. And it's, it's been very difficult for the HOA to try to figure out how to deal with that. They've also discussed in the past, when they met with Mr. Reed and I a year or so ago, potentially turning that green space to the city as a city park or utilizing it as a city park. There's a really great pond in there that they're upkeeping now. So, this neighborhood needs some help. Another concern that was raised in the two letters that were read tonight, as well as by me a year or so ago, Coy Lane, that new section originally was supposed to connect to Sibolo Farms. I know we have no control over what happens back there, but that new section has a lot of houses, and they have one, they have two exits onto Coy Lane. Coy Lane only has one exit onto 1103. There were downed power lines not too long ago across Coy Lane on 1103. None of the residents back there in, in the tiny section of Saddle Creek Ranch, the existing section, or that new section could get to their homes. They had to park on 1103 and walk home because there was no access. There's no other entrance. When the first section was built, that was like 2004, 2005, before there was a requirement for two exits, so that's how they got it passed. But this new section, we've allowed them to build with two exits, so technically, they have two exits from their neighborhood, but they only go to one place. And once they get to the end of Coy Lane, there's nowhere to go. So, I don't know how we can remedy that or if we can work with the developer on that or even just bring it up again to say that we've talked about it, but that is a concern with as many homes that are going in back there. So, long spiel short, the code, the maintenance of the property, the grass, the drainage, all of that, the condition of the stuff that they're building and the repairs that they're making, are they up to standard and will they last for us? Are we going to be saddled with that? And then if we could meet with them, that would be great. And then the exit. I forgot where I was going.
And Rick, if you could please respond to that, and then Hicks is going to make a few comments, but go ahead, Rick, if you don't mind.
Rick, would you like me to jump in? Sorry, Chris.
Just a second. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I would like to remind the council, we're in the middle of a UDC rewrite, and we'll be able to tackle many of the issues that you outlined in your comments. They may not apply to this subdivision, but in future, we'll be able to look at the layout, the design, the connectivity of the street network to the larger street network and be able to have criteria for approval of those developments that we don't have in place at the present. And I also would point out that back in 2013, for some reason, there was not a PIA by the staff that was here at the time negotiated for this development. I don't know why. If you recall at your last meeting, we brought back an amendment to the Steel Creek subdivision with much more definition and refined the criteria with performance measures. That's kind of the operations that we have now in place for all plats going forward. But this one back in 2013, I'll go back and do a case review and we'll try to figure out what happened, but there's not a PIA that we can use as a tool to try to encourage the developer to, to address some of the issues that you outlined. And third, the P&amp;Z and staff are working together, along with the city engineer and the public works director, on revising our warranty, our bond warranty program and trying to implement a 36-month timeframe to observe the quality of the infrastructure that's installed so that we can determine if in fact it will last beyond that period. Right now, it's an 18-month period with a, up to a second 18-month period, and so we don't get that full 36 months in every case. And so, we're looking at potentially revising that to give the city more time to watch the performance of the infrastructure. The city engineer has pointed out that the elasticity of the soils in Sibolo presents a problem for infrastructure, and he's recommending that we expand that timeline for us to observe the performance of the infrastructure, make sure it lasts a longer time. And so, we're working that ordinance amendment through the Planning and Zoning Commission. They've reviewed it a couple of times. They are asking more questions and making sure that it's a positive move for the city. And once we finalize that, they'll formulate their recommendation and then we'll bring that forward to the council for action. We're not waiting for the UDC. We think that's an important issue, and we'd like to bring it to you and not wait for the 18 or 15 months that we're hoping the UDC will be completed in. But with that, I'll let Chris respond to the other issues.
So, Steel Creek Unit 7 and Unit 8 had street issues. Both of those are still pending final acceptance. I can't remember if it was 7 or 8 where they had the failure of the street at one of the intersections. They actually did some investigation and found that at least one of the reasons that failed was due to a water leak at a meter. And so, they repaired the meter and they've repaired the street. We've told them we won't schedule the final acceptance until the streets are fixed, and there's also several sidewalks that need to be fixed. So, we're telling, they have to fix that before we'll even schedule a final acceptance punch walk on 7 and 8.
Is that for, I'm sorry, is that for Saddle Creek Ranch or Steel Creek?
Yes.
Mr. Otto, I think you said Steel Creek, but you meant Saddle Creek.
I meant Saddle Creek. I'm sorry. I got Steel Creek later. On Saddle Creek, 7 and 8, we're waiting for them to make some major repairs before we schedule punch walks. On Steel Creek 9A, we had a preliminary acceptance punch walk scheduled, and we canceled it in the field because frankly, they weren't ready. And so, we're waiting for them to make some corrections before we even perform that preliminary walk. And... And then as for the two entrances onto Coy Lane, Coy Lane is a collector, and so having two entrances on Coy does meet the requirements for multiple access points per the current UDC.
Thank you, and if, I'm not sure when you're going to do those punch walks, but I would love to come do a walkthrough again.
We'll let you know.
I learned a ton last time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Hicks, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Kind of hit on the same things that Mrs. Cunningham hit on. We all understand that the ground here has been used as farmland for years and years and years, and so the elasticity of it is, is very bouncing. I'll just use that, that word for it, you know, because, but these developers just can't continue to come in, put down junk, and expect us to accept it, because we're the ones, all 38, 40,000 Cibolonians are the ones that are going to have to pay for repairing that road afterwards, and I'm done with it. I know that I've asked Julio whenever he was still CIP, we need to expand that warranty. I'm glad that y'all are working on that, but we've got to do something to protect, that's our investment, because we are accepting what they did. Once we accept it, it's ours. And so by us accepting that, it's ours. It's an investment, you know, that, I just can't stress this enough, but when you've got people sending emails, writing in, asking, you know, for us to look at this, we as council have to do something. We're the ones that are ultimately responsible to the citizens. They come to us and ask us to do the fixing. Not y'all, they ask us, and then we have to relay it on to y'all to make it happen. So I understand that, you know, it'll get passed no matter what. I just, I want y'all to understand as staff, we can't just be, you know, accepting whatever because they can get away with it. I mean, the sooner we can get the UDC fixed, the better off we will be. And if, the sooner we can get that warranty in place, the better off we will be. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Okay, and then, thank you very much, Joel. And of course, we do have, you know, the money to fix this street if need be, but that's not something we ever want to do, is to fix a road that should have been, should have been built correctly by the developer that's responsible for building this road, because every time we're spending city money to fix a road that should have been built correctly by a developer, that's one less road that we can't fix, you know, that we won't have money to fix, that, you know, is out of warranty, that, you know, that the citizens have been asking for, is for us to come along and fix another road that, you know, and so we don't have the money to come along and fix roads that should have been built correctly. Norma?
I just would like to come into complete agreement without being redundant with the other council members outside. I just wanted to add one more piece of information. Mr. Reed, there was an email sent by me to include an HOA member for Saddle Creek Ranch for April 29th at 5:00 PM with city staff. If we can get together with those HOA board members and meet with them, it is just quite urgent, it's very important, and if we can just set that, that time, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. So with this item, you know, and I know this is pretty drawn out for, for an item on a consent agenda, but, you know, here we are, and so if we don't vote to approve this, it's going to be approved automatically. So is there anybody who wants to make a motion with a condition? Go ahead. Did you have something to say, Mr. Reed?
Just Mayor and Council, I think it's important that you are focused on just Unit 9B, and if we need to pull up an image of 9B, Chris Otto, our inspection staff, our public work staff, walk these units, and they do not bring them forward to you. If they find that there are deficiencies, they issue punch lists. Those punch lists have to be addressed before it comes in front of you. And so if you want to be specific about your concerns regarding Unit 9B, that would be helpful in your decision-making versus some of the historic units that are out there, or other units that have not received final acceptance, that Mr. Otto spoke to earlier, that we have made them identify, repair, and replace public improvements that were not meeting our standard within their warranty. I just want to make sure we're focused on Unit 9B. If you want us to pull the image of that up, we can, and Mr. Otto, staff can answer any questions that you have regarding this unit.
Well, and I'd like to add to that. Right now on Unit 9B, this is just the plat that we're approving. There is no infrastructure on the ground yet. Infrastructure acceptance will come, you know, probably six months from now, assuming it's good.
All right, thank you, Chris. All right, so we'll, I guess we'll tackle that, or we'll cross that bridge when it, when it comes to us, and with the infrastructure in six months. And so if we could get a, do we want to make a motion? Does anybody have a desire to make a motion on this, or do we just want to let the shot clock take care of it? If so, make a motion. If not, we'll just move on. All right, hearing none, we're going to move on to item number eight, staff update. Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I will send you an email after this update. I do not have any new updates on FM 1103 Phase 1 or 2. I've been sending separate emails on that, and I appreciate Ms. Cunningham's persistence on Wayne, what's the update on Phase 1 or 2? And I reach out to Will Lockett, the area engineer, and he, he does provide updates. I have yet to receive a schedule for Phase 1, so that's why there's no update. And when I say schedule, that Hunter Industries should be giving TechStop at some point an actual schedule for Phase 1, and I've not received that, so. On the list here, the multipurpose Event Center Field Restoration, council directed us to go out to repair, replace the sod and the irrigation system, and so the advertisement for that will be May 3rd and 10th, that's in the newspaper. We have a pre-bid meeting, May 12th. Bid opening is May 30th, and then we will be bringing the award of contract to city council after we receive those bids, so that we can proceed with the actual improvements to the MECC field. Another update, it's actually just a reminder, I want to remind council that the animal care facility will have an open house Wednesday, May 7th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, and I know that we usually send you an appointment to be on your calendar, and we'll make sure that if you do not have it, that you will have one for Wednesday, May 7th, 4:00 to 6:00 PM, at the existing animal services facility. The Trailhead Parking Lot at HEB, the pavement markings and signage are scheduled to go in actually today, and that was happening today, so we continue to make progress on opening the Trailhead Parking Lot. We have the final punch list for the Town Creek Drainage, that's Haverhill Road and the drainage improvements related with that Phase 2, so that one is moving to final completion. The Deer Creek Drainage Improvements are 90% complete, and we continue to be on schedule for an early summer completion. And the Green Valley Water Main Extension is 60% under construction, and at the last meeting, there was a comment about the concern of the fire hydrants. I do have an email that I will send to you to explain why there are just five new fire hydrants, why they are approximately three to five feet off of the pavement, and how common it is that when we do expand roads in the future, you simply disconnect that fire hydrant per the pipe that's in the ground, and you move it back. But the water line itself has been put in at a depth to not be in conflict with future road improvement, so I just want to give council the confidence that we're doing good work with our capital improvement projects. And I have an email that'll provide you details around that.
It's funny you should say that, Mr. Reed, because
Yes, sir.
Had somebody at breakfast this morning question me about that.
So when I send you
I said I brought it up, so.
When I send you an email, you'll have a lot of details that you can share with anybody that you'd like. We're doing good work, we're wisely spending taxpayer dollars, we have a construction inspection team that inspects all of these projects, and we accept them only when they meet our specifications. And I'm talking about our city-funded capital improvement projects. And we obviously inspect new subdivisions. So I'm moving on, but I will send that email out either tonight when I send my updates or shortly thereafter. And with that, then, just updates, the Noble Group Event Center, I sent you all an email. We tried every way to do Phase 1, but when we got bids, estimates from, and actual, not estimates, but bids from two contractors that put us well north of 50,000, I had to send you an email to say, we even look at co-ops that had governmental pricing. They would not even come out to bid on it because of the size of it, it wasn't big enough for them. So we did release, or interest for bids on April the 11th. Today, we had a voluntary, not a mandatory, a voluntary pre-bid meeting. We had two companies show up, and both very qualified local companies, and they were very interested in this, so we know that we have at least two interested companies, and we'll be receiving bids, I think it's around May 15th, and then we'll be bringing to council a contract for Phase 1 improvements to Noble Group Event Center as quickly as possible. You already know the legal services request for proposals is out, and we are expecting those proposals on May 16th. And then we have the water, wastewater rate study. Those proposals were due on May, on April 14th, and so we'll be bringing to this council an award of professional services agreement for a water wastewater rate study. And that's all for tonight. I will send everything to council. That's as far as RFPs and capital improvement projects. I'd like to turn this over to Ms. Peggy Simics to give an update on how well shred day went this year.
Well, first, I'd like to thank the council and Mr. Reed that came out to help us for shred day. And of course, I always help, want to thank Valerie and the other ladies that work for me, because I can't do it without them. This was the most people that we've ever had for shred day, ever. We had least amount of people helping out at this shred day, but it was the most amount of people that we've ever had. We had over 22,000 pounds of paper that was shredded. Our people were in line at, at 6:30 in the morning. Before it even started, the line was already full in the back parking lot and going down Main Street. We tried our best to get all the cars out of Main Street so they wouldn't be hitting 1103 down at the end of Main Street. It went pretty fast, but we never, ever had a break at this, there was not a moment that the trucks or the people working did not, they were busy constantly, constantly. It is the first time ever that we had to close shred day over, we closed it before 11 o'clock. A little, I think about 10 minutes to 11 is when we actually closed the trucks off, and the trucks had to leave. We've closed it before at about quarter to, quarter to 12, but never as early as we had to at this shred day. So I just want to thank everyone for all their help, and I know that we had a few phone calls, but most of them, they knew that the trucks were full. They, we only had a few that were maybe a little bit ugly, but most of them were very appreciative that the council lets us do shred day, and all they could say was, maybe we need another truck, maybe we need another shred day, or whatever, but most of them were very kind that, that, because I did, every car that was there, I went to every car and apologized, but told them we couldn't help but that the trucks were full. So they were appreciative, and I just want to pass that along and thank the council and everyone again.
Thank you, Peggy.
Well, Live Oaks got one coming up in May.
Yeah, and I know the Chamber does one, too. The Chamber's got one, I, yeah, so, yeah.
And that's for Cibolo residents, too.
Yep. Okay, well, very good. Thank you, Peggy. And real quick, Mr. Reed, before we move on, you mentioned an event coming up at the animal services facility. Could you tell me again what that is?
That's
May 7th?
Yes, and it's just an open house. We want to celebrate, recognize, and promote the awareness of the animal services facility, and show off the better and improved office building, the additional kennels, and the overall improvements on site. So, May 7th, please come out, 4:00 to 6:00 PM.
Okay, you said 6:00 PM on May 7th?
4:00 to 6:00 PM.
Oh, 4:00 to 6:00, I'm sorry. I was just taking some notes
That's okay, sir.
For my wrap-up show.
Yeah, I'll send you a calendar invite.
Thank you very much. And then the HEB Parking Lot now open by the pond, right?
No, sir, we just did the striping today.
Striping?
Let me turn it over to Mr. Gomez and ask him if he has an approximate date that the Trailhead Parking Lot will open.
Yes, so we're completing the striping right now. We have some improvements to do around it, some to put in sodding and stuff, and reconnect the irrigation. So once all that's done, hopefully within the next couple of weeks, we'll be doing the final walkthrough, and then after the punch list is done, we'll open up the parking lot. So roughly in about the next, I would say 20 or 30 days, we'll have it all completed and ready to go.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Julio. And then one last question about the, I've been getting some questions, Mr. Reed, about the Cove Lane? I know that's getting close, just wanted to see if we had an ETA when that will be punching through from Town Creek to CBD?
We will have that subdivision on the May 13th council agenda for preliminary acceptance.
Okay.
And should council accept that, they will open the street up.
Okay, good. So we'll find that at the next council meeting. All right, great. Thank you. All right, let's move on. Okay, so 9A is, has been pulled by the applicant, and we're going to talk about that one on May 13th as well. We'll move on to 10A, approval, disapproval of a resolution of the City of Cibolo, Texas, regard, appointing Ted Gibbs to Canyon Regional Water Authority, CRWA, Board of Trustees for a two-year term of office. And I know it sounds like we just did this, but this is, this had to be done as a resolution is the reason why it's back. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve 10A.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilman Hicks, second by Councilwoman Cunningham. Please vote on your screens to appoint Ted Gibbs to the CRWA Board of Trustees, 7-0 approval. Next up is B, approval, disapproval of a resolution of the City of Cibolo, Texas, appointing Councilwoman Donetta Roberts
Make a motion to approve 10B.
To CRWA Board of Trustees for a two-year term of office.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Hicks, second by Councilwoman Cunningham. Please vote. 7-0, thank you very much, Donetta. And then the last one, this is for approval, disapproval of a resolution of the City of Cibolo, Texas, appointing Jacob Parsons to Canyon Regional Water Authority, CRWA, Board of Managers for a one-year term of office.
I'd like to make a motion to approve appointing Jacob Parsons to as the manager.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilwoman Donetta Roberts, second by Councilwoman Cunningham. Please vote. 7-0, all right. Got those housekeeping resolutions wrapped up, so we're going to go on with the agenda to executive session. The city council will meet in executive session as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, 551.087, economic development, and 551.074, personnel matters, to discuss the following. A, Project Rushmore Mountain, or B, Project Theo, C, Tolly Road Acquisition, D, City Attorney's Appointment, Employment, Evaluation, and Duties of the City Manager, and/or Address an RFP for Legal Services, and E, Legal Advice on the Settlement of EEOC Charge Number 451-2025-00454. And so for those of you in the audience tonight, we, this executive session with five items would probably take at least 45 minutes, maybe closer to an hour or more than an hour or so, you know, make your choices if you want to stick around and wait until we come out. But the time is now, 7:41, and we will break into executive session. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, we are back from executive session. The time is now 8:39 PM. We're going to resume our city council meeting. We have a motion about the scores from the previous, previous selection of our city attorney. Did you want to make a motion on that, Randy?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to release the city council's scoring of proposals and interviews for city attorney services in response to the city's RFP 24-140-01.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Please vote on your screens. Motion carries, seven zero. Thank you, Randy.
I'd also like to address, now that we've released that, there was a comment made a couple of weeks ago that myself and the mayor contributed due to our voting of the scoring process. And the letter read basically that due to the way I voted and the mayor voted that we swayed the vote.
Is that not M? That's going to come up on M, is it not?
When you say on him, who are you referring to?
It's through.
M? So we want to save it for that one? We'll discuss it on M.
Yeah, we can.
Okay. All right.
I've had, I've had items on this agenda for a couple of months now. I'd like to see about getting to them.
It's early tonight. I think we'll get to all of them, Joel. All right. Next up is item 13A, discussion action authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase order from Sills, Sillsby Ford for a new Ford F-450 in the amount of $147,915.50. Mr. Gomez.
Yes, Mayor Council. So this purchase is for our utilities division. It's the purchase of a new 2025 Ford F-450 for our utility, replacing our current 2016 model. This current model that we have, we've made a lot of repairs with it. This current model that we have, we've made a lot of repairs with it. We have multiple wiring shortages on it. We have ongoing issues with the AC. We've made repairs with it. We still can't get down to the source of those repairs. And currently right now, the AC's still not working on it. So, we did have this in our proposal as far as our fleet acquisition, but we identified savings in our twenty nineteen certificate bonds to purchase this truck outright. And it does make sense to do this because of the outfitting that we have to do for this equipment. If we outfitted a leased vehicle, we'd have to pay for, to get it outfitted once. Every four years, we'd have to pay to get that removed and put that onto a new lease. So, this would actually be saving money on the outfitting of that truck. And so, we're seeking council's approval on moving forward with the purchase of this. I know we did provide city council with photos of the current vehicle and photos of the new proposed vehicle.
Yeah, the question I had on this one was, you know, why not just go with the fleet agreement? And so, your, your answer to that is about the, all the stuff that you would have to pay for to outfit it. It wouldn't make sense to, to outfit a leased vehicle and then have to turn around and give the vehicle back someday and then take all the, all the special, you know.
Yeah, the outfitting. We'd have to take that package off, get the new lease. We'd have to pay to get that re-put onto the new lease. So, it, it makes sense. This vehicle will last us and we'll be, our staff does a great job of maintaining their equipment, so.
Joel, go ahead.
We've got this in our budget, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions from council? Jeff?
Question.
Mr. Gomez, how long do you expect the truck to last if we approve this?
This should last us at least ten years.
Just because I don't, what exactly is the purpose of this truck? What does it do? What is it?
So, this would be for our utilities divisions and we are putting a crane on the back end of it so that when we're doing major repairs with it, we'd be able to lift the pipes, go out there to our job sites and make those repairs with that, using the lift on it.
Not just that, I mean, fire hydrants, I mean, stuff like that. It weighs a lot to drop the motors in there.
Norma, did you have a question?
Did, yes. So, on the current vehicles, other than the AC not functioning, is there anything else on the vehicles? Is the crane no longer functioning? Are the doors on the utility boxes no longer working? I'm just kind of curious as to why these vehicles are obsolete or no longer.
They're not obsolete, it's just the wear and tear on it. And we did have this signed up to do, to be put on our fleet acquisition to, with the lease program. So, these were going to be replaced either way, but we found that it'd be better off using our, our savings from our bond program to purchase these vehicles outright rather than use general fund money or replacing these every four years. So, this is a more effective way of doing it and then seeing how vehicles cost more money over years and that it makes more sense for us to purchase this vehicle outright. And our staff would be maintaining it. Our staff does a great job maintaining their equipment. I could tell you that the lock boxes, yes, they do work, but the functionality of the vehicle itself is what's getting the wear and tear, which is why we're having to replace this vehicle.
So, what will happen to this vehicle?
So, this one would be sold off. Yeah, we're not going to be using it anymore. So, the, the next other piece of equipment, we already sold that one off. This one, we do the same thing. We put on GovDills and get that money back and be put back into the general fund.
How much will we get for something like this, usually when it's sold off? And would it be advantageous of having two or is that the usual custom?
Yeah, I, I don't know what that exact amount is. I could find out with our fleet manager to get you a rough estimate on what that could be and we could provide you with that answer.
Hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve thirteen A.
Got a motion by Councilman Hicks, second by Councilman Randy Roberts. Please vote. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Leo. Stick around for the next one. B, discussion action authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase order from Silsby Ford for the, for a new Ford F four fifty super cab in the amount of one hundred and six thousand eight hundred sixty-eight dollars. Mr. Gomez.
Yes, so this one is for our streets division. We provided council with photos of the current vehicle and with the new proposed one. This one, I will say that we have replaced multiple filters, the crack case, front brakes. We've put sixty-eight hundred in repairs for fuel line repairs on this one. And the last estimate that we got, we had an estimate for almost ninety-five hundred dollars for a repair that, for more work on the fuel system that we decided we're not going to move forward with since this was a leased vehicle and it is in line for replacement. I told them there's no point in spending ninety-five hundred when we have a new vehicle coming our way. So, we did identify savings in our FY twenty-five program and we're, we will be using our COs from our FY twenty-five to purchase this vehicle. This isn't coming out of the general fund.
Motion, or did you have a question, Joel?
I do. We're going from a crew cab to an extended cab?
No, so it's the same model from the existing one that we had. This one, it is a super cab.
The picture here shows that's a super cab or?
Yes, it's, so it's a crew cab. It's just the four doors on, on the newer one.
Okay, I just want to make sure because the picture you've got here, that's basically an extended cab.
Yes, we just wanted to show more or less what the vehicle would look like. They didn't have the exact model.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve thirteen B.
Got a motion by Councilman Hicks, second by Councilwoman Roberts. Please vote. Motion carries seven zero. Thanks, Leo.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is thirteen C, discussion action regarding the final plat of Venado Crossing Unit Six.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The property owner is HDC Venado Crossing LLC, Representative Wayne Flores with Colliers Engineering. The area is approximately twenty-three point four acres, located south of FM seventy-eight, west of Meadowview Estates. This is in Council Place Four. The future land use map has this called out as compact residential. The property has a planned unit development. The ordinance was created back in twenty fourteen and amended in twenty seventeen. The proposed use is for seventy-six residential lots and three drainage lots. The utility providers are for sewer, the city of Siblo, water is GV Sud and electricity GV EC. The proposed final plat for Venado Crossing Unit Six is located directly south of Unit Five. The lot establishes seventy-six residential lots that are typically sixty feet in width as well as three drainage lots. Unit Six includes approximately three thousand one hundred and twenty linear feet of internal roadway. TIA report was reviewed and approved by the city engineer as part of this review. Construction plans for the utility and roadway improvements have been approved. Water will be served by GV Sud and new mains extend through Unit Six. The city of Siblo will provide sewer service with the sanitary sewer main extending to an existing manhole located north of the city-owned lift station as well as GV EC will serve as the electrical provider. The stormwater management plan for Venado Crossing Unit Six was reviewed by the city engineer. No portion of the property is currently located within the FEMA floodplain. Part land dedication is not proposed on this plat as that requirement has been satisfied with the dedication of Unit One. At its April ninth regular meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted six to zero to recommend denial of the final plat of Venado Crossing Unit Six, and this was due to some outstanding comments, which included the omission of a building setback line on Lot Thirty-Six, missing right-of-way dimensions for Hunter's Lodge, square footage not shown on Lot Nine Oh Four, as well as inconsistent easement references in the keynotes and minor errors and formatting issues. Since that meeting has taken place, the applicant has not addressed any of those comments as outlined within the attached city engineers' letter. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the final plat of Venado Crossing Unit Six as it does not conform with the city's UDC and Section two twelve of the Texas Local Government Code due to those outstanding comments. Staff is available if you have any questions.
Joel, you have a question, you said?
I got it. Well, my question was, with y'all denying it, I mean, they haven't changed since we got this. With that being said, I'll make a motion to deny myself.
Got a motion by Councilman Hicks, second by Councilman Mahoney. Please vote on your screens.
I also want to add, this is another neighborhood where we're getting complaints that the, and this is again, something that the city doesn't have much control over, but if you're speaking with the developer, the residents are complaining that they still don't have any amenities. So, if you could mention that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, so motion carries seven zero on the motion to deny thirteen C. Next up is D, discussion action regarding the preliminary plat of Grace Valley Ranch, Phase Four A. Mr. Spencer.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. I do want to preface before I start that the applicant today submitted a postponement letter, and I do have copies of the letter if you all would like me to proceed with showing that to you.
No need.
All right. So, do we have a motion to table?
Well, they've got it in here as motion to deny, but if, if what y'all are needing, I mean, that staff is denying it.
Yeah, so the, the reason for postponement was so that the applicant could have additional time to respond to the comments that were outstanding. So, Texas Local Government Code says that the city cannot request the applicant to make any sort of written postponement. However, they can write that themselves and the other requirement is the fact that you all agree with the postponement. So, after that, you can pause the clock of the thirty-day shot clock.
Okay, then I'll make a motion per the letter that the city received, postpone it until they bring it back to us.
Now, would that be the next council meeting or are we just going to leave this open?
Whenever they bring it back. I mean, it, it stops the shot clock altogether, so you don't have to worry about it.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilman Hicks, second by Councilwoman Cunningham. Please vote.
Didn't go?
There you go. All right. Motion carries seven zero D, or table. All right. Next up is E, discussion action regarding the preliminary acceptance of public infrastructure for Steel Creek Unit Six. Mr. Otto.
Steel Creek Unit Six is by Continental Homes. They have petitioned for preliminary acceptance of infrastructure. The land study was approved June twenty-sixth of twenty eighteen. This unit contains one hundred and eleven single-family lots and five open space lots. I do want to note that five hundred and fifty-three lots have been recorded already in previous units, bringing the total to six sixty-four. There's six thousand five hundred and ninety-seven linear feet of eight-inch water, nine hundred and fifty-two linear feet of twelve-inch water, four thousand six hundred and fifteen linear feet of eight-inch sanitary sewer, one thousand eight hundred and eighteen linear feet of twelve-inch sanitary sewer, and forty-seven hundred linear feet of laterals to serve those homes. There's six thousand four hundred and forty-nine linear feet of streets and then other miscellaneous work. I do want to note in your packet, there's other earthwork clearing SWP, three P, other basin and other lift station. I have struck those out in my notes and in the value I'm about to give you because the earthwork and the basin aren't really relevant, they're not public improvements, and the lift station is being handled separately per the PIA that y'all approved at the last council meeting. So, with that said, the total value of improvements is three million two hundred and forty-five thousand five hundred and one dollars. We did do a punch walk. I did verify they have addressed all punch list items and therefore I am recommending preliminary acceptance be approved.
Any questions from council? Leave a motion.
Are these any of the roads that had to be redone?
This is Steel Creek.
Right, they had to redo.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Okay, you're thinking three A. Three A had to be redone. Three B had some sections that had to be redone. Unit Six was actually in really good condition. The punch list was pretty minor. One of the things that was on the punch list is on the near Tully Road, we had them add a, a small drainage swell that connected all the way down to the center line of the creek to minimize any impact to adjacent properties. I think y'all know who I'm talking about. And so, that was one of the, one of the bigger items in the punch list. The rest of it was pretty minor.
Is approving this going to help with the connection to Tully Road at all?
The connection to Tully Road will not be constructed until we construct Tully Road or I believe it was twenty-four months. Like, we, we asked them to delay their connection to Tully Road until we do it, but we did put it, an end date on it where they could begin if we don't move forward with Tully Road soon enough. It's all in the PIA that was approved at the last meeting.
Okay, I remember discussing that. I just wanted to bring that back up again because I drove that neighborhood this weekend. It is huge. It goes way back there. The only exit, now they finally have a light, but that is the only exit for that entire neighborhood. That is a lot of houses, six hundred and however many you said, six eighty-eight?
Six sixty-four.
Six sixty-four. That is a lot of houses to go out one exit onto eleven oh three. The traffic on eleven oh three is horrific. I know we don't want them pouring out onto Tully if we're about to do construction on Tully, but this is a safety issue at this point. Town Creek right there, that little tiny neighborhood, has one exit. They have a gate that opens up to Steel Creek. They're having a hard time getting out of their neighborhood. This is something I'm going to put on a future agenda, but it's kind of, along with Steel Creek, the two of them kind of, it may be worth a discussion to open up that gate temporarily through Town Creek to allow two entries and exits for them. No, they, the residents at Town Creek mentioned that. They brought it up because they can't get out with that light. Now, everything's backed up and they can't get out of their neighborhood. So, if they could go through Steel, Steel Creek to get to the light, then they could get out. Yeah, so it would, it would be part of the NTMP. But I just, I'm concerned that we keep approving homes. I know this is a final, this is different, this is infrastructure, but I, I just want the developer to be aware too. Like, we're concerned about the number of homes we're shoving in there with one exit. This is a safety issue. But I'll make a motion to approve thirteen E.
Well, second.
Got a motion on the table, accounts, by Councilwoman Cunningham, second by Councilman Mahoney. Please vote to approve. Motion carries four to three.
Thank you.
Wow. Surprise, surprise.
Okay. Next up is F, discussion action on exploring potential partnerships for spring and fall cleanup events. Councilwoman Cunningham.
So, every year we do two cleanups. We do the spring cleanup and the fall cleanup. There's always furniture and big items that are thrown away that are, appear, I mean, I'm not crawling in the garbage can, but they appear to be in decent condition. A lot of times, it's just easier to clear it out of your house. There's a big dumpster, let's throw it away rather than try to donate it or find someone that will come and haul it off. I was talking to Mr. Reed and asked about the feasibility of having a place like Goodwill or Habitat for Humanity or somewhere that has a thrift store, maybe park, park a box truck that we could put any usable-ish items in there. I've seen dishes thrown away. I've seen, like, dishes that are not broken, things like that. We have a lot of, we have a lot of growth coming to the area. Filling our landfills is not ideal. It will make it more expensive for all of us. Throwing away stuff that's usable is just a waste of money. If we can partner with someone and it would be free to us, then I would like to see about making that a possibility. Mr. Reed did have staff reach out to other cities that have similar events like ours. Nobody else is doing this right now. I don't think that that means that we shouldn't try. It, just nobody else is doing it right now. It is easier just to have a dumpster and throw everything away, but if, I think if we can try to do a little bit better, then we probably should.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, Katie. And, you know, so maybe we could reach out to the Salvation Army and the Goodwill, maybe even the Red Cross, whoever's willing to come. And I think that signage would be important there too, you know, as, as far as, you know, before you throw this away, you know, just think, is it, is it good enough condition to donate, you know? And if so, have an arrows donations this way, something like that.
We have people who assist during those events that help unload and, and dump in the dumpster, so they could also help just load stuff in the truck versus in a dumpster.
Yep.
There's lots of, of charity groups that do that type of stuff. Goodwill and Habitat are just the two big ones. Goodwill has a store in Siblo, so that kind of seemed easiest.
Right.
But there's also the veterans group and the, I believe it's the ARC that will pick up things off your porch. So, I think that there's a lot of different options available for this. I just would like to move forward with trying to set something up maybe for the fall event and see if it works out. If it doesn't, then we tried.
Right.
That's what it is. But if it does, then it's at least taking some of that usable stuff and putting it back into the community to people who need it.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Now, the spring and fall event, I know we'd been doing that with, I think through Republic, so who we could do in that with in the fall? Will it be with our new company for waste?
Well, no, we don't, we won't have it. We won't have it for the new company.
Okay.
We won't have it no more. We can take it to the dump in Lockhart or Luling, or we can use Gualipac County when they have theirs.
Yeah.
And they're having theirs, I think, twice, maybe quarterly, but I know twice a year.
All right. So it won't be an option for us anymore?
Are we still, I thought we were still going to try to do one.
I do believe we are still trying to do one, but in our new service delivery model, a brush and bulk pickup every two weeks, that's the direction that you gave us. We'll bring back a contract. It would minimize the need for the spring and fall cleanups to the scale that we have done them in the past.
Okay. Well, if we, if we do a bulk pickup day with the city, I would like to try to do that.
Maybe, Katie, it could be something that we could do with Shred Day, because that's something that's still going to be on schedule. And like we do the food drive, it could be something that we could do off to the side with a nonprofit coming in to helping out with that. That would still be advantageous.
Potentially. Shred Day is just so busy that that would be like logistic.
No, what we would do is do it at the annex building, not here. You couldn't do it here at this facility.
Well, we can always ask our waste provider if they'd be willing to do one a year for us a bulk pickup. We also, bulk pickup does not include hazardous waste, as far as I remember, so we'd still.
But the new contract as well.
We do have that.
The new contract.
Your contract is hazardous?
So the household hazardous waste will be at the curb. Don't take me literally, but it's at your house. And so that's
Yes.
A concierge service, if you will.
You just got to let them know that you.
Do you want to make a motion on this one, Katie, then?
I don't think we need a motion.
No?
Direction, and I understand the direction, and we will absolutely strive to partner with local nonprofits that might take secondhand furniture and fixtures to have a second life.
Okay, sounds good. Next up is G, Discussion Action on the Denton Navarro Rodriguez, Bernal, Santi, and Zek PC Engagement Letter for Interim City Attorney Services, and authorize the city manager to execute this engagement letter for expenses exceeding $50,000. Mr. Reed.
Mayor Allen, city council members, I will be brief. As you know, I have the authority to approve contracts up to $50,000. You directed me to put DN, RBS, and Z under contract to provide interim legal services. So I did that, knowing my limitation of expenses goes up to $50,000. So tonight, I'm merely asking that this engagement agreement, which I executed on March 20, 2025, that you authorize me to re-sign it for amounts above $50,000. And this is only for the interim period. Per the cover letter in your staff report, we are expecting proposals for legal services and city attorney services on May 16. We expect that council during the month of May and into June will be reviewing those proposals. We'll select firms to interview, and we would expect interviews to be sometime in June, and the earliest award that city council could bring in front to take action would be June 24. I'm not saying that you will actually deliver on June 24. I just did some rough math, and I believe that would be the very earliest. So what you would do tonight is if between now and June 24, or if it's a July meeting, if the expenses exceed $50,000, you've authorized me to continue to sign the monthly invoices from Denton Navarro.
Motion to approve 13G.
Please vote on your screens.
I had to hit it for her.
All right. Thank you. Motion carries seven zero. All right. Next up is H, Discussion Action to Honor Leases for the Noble Group Event Center. So I put this item on the agenda because we do have, well, we just acquired the Noble Group Event Center earlier this year. I believe that was at the end of February or the end of March. It was, you know, not too long ago, within the past month or two. And so as part of that process, there were a few local organizations that have been using the Noble Group Event Center for many, many years. And so one of them is a man who has a church that meets up there on Sundays in one of the rooms there at the Noble Group that his congregation has been meeting there for quite a while. And we also have a few, like, the Masons meet up there, and the Masons were very generous to the citizens of Sibolo at the past two parades. They were giving away free toys to every child in Sibolo. And so that's just something that they've done for the past two Christmases. And so they've been great community partners, and there's a couple others that are sororities and fraternities that meet there regularly. And so Dr. Jackson did have some existing leases that were open there at the Noble Group Event Center in the past. And so what I've asked staff to do is to just take a look at some of those existing leases and get the city council familiarized with what those are, and if we could come up with a plan for how we could accommodate some of these folks. I know that right now, the, anyway, I know during your city manager update, Mr. Reed, earlier tonight, you gave us an update that you're seeking, you know, still finding somebody to come and do the work. And so it doesn't sound like that it's going to be open anytime soon, but once it does reopen, I wanted to have some information on, or in the meantime, come up with a plan with all of us as a city council to honor some of those leases, or decide what we're going to do. Mr. Reed, go ahead. Okay. Joel, did you have a question?
I read through it, and I noticed that all the lease dates were expired. So that was my question. If they're expired, I didn't know what was going on with that. I have no problem working with them because they have been using it. I was just wondering because everything that I looked at, everything had been expired, so.
Yeah, and that was just a function of, you know, the note, you know, knowing that the city was taking over. And so, but those, but Dr. Jackson has talked to me, and he said that a lot of those are wanting to come up with a plan moving forward.
I have no problem coming up with a plan, a fee schedule for that. I have no problem for that because it's one of the things that we do. We've figured out our fee schedules for the annex building, for that community center, for the Fire Station 2's building, for its community center. So we'll just need to figure out a fee process. I'm with you. Staff needs to go and do a little bit of work and bring it back to council, and then we can decide on it from there. But I have no problem with it. I just, when I was looking over it, I was like, this is expired. This is expired.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I'm talking about moving forward, but a good catch, Joel. And so, and in the meantime, if city staff could also, you know, and I know that this idea came from you, I believe, Mr. Reed, but if we could talk to, or maybe it wasn't you, but anyway, if we could talk to maybe the Masons and others about going to the City Hall Annex in the meantime, you know, because I think we just have, what, about one HOA using it right now, or maybe, or maybe, I think it was, what was it, the, it was the, it was the Ms. Sibolo Pageant is the one that's using it now, right?
I mentioned that when I called you to understand kind of the background of this item that you wanted to discuss, and I mentioned, if it's a small group, the City Hall Annex Community Room, Ms. Roberts is nodding her head, yes, it does work. So.
I mean, yes, it would work, but you would also have to go look at that policy that's in place, that only one person can use it one time a month.
Correct. That's the way the policy is written now.
So, yes, so that would have to be addressed if this is going to be used by somebody over consecutive days in a month.
And so, Mayor and Council, one thing that we promised is we would bring back a reservation policy conversation with you for the Noble Group Event Center. We'll go ahead and bring back the reservation policy that applies to both the community room at the City Hall Annex. We'll also then also identify the training room at Fire Station 2. And when we do, I will make sure that we list these organizations, Mayor, that you've put on tonight's agenda, so that council can just give us general direction.
Councilman Mahoney.
Just a quick comment. The, my HOA uses, occasionally uses the annex building, including tomorrow night, and it in no way compares to the Noble Event Center, largely because there's one restroom. One restroom. And so I think any conversation about this shouldn't put those on the same, they're not really parallel to the Noble Event Center. And using it, and I don't want to make things costly for these good organizations, but I just don't think they're on the same level playing field because that area is nicer, has more plumbing. And so when we talk about having a plan, I'm just thinking maybe a rate structure is what we're talking about doing, and maybe that just means we're going to approve a rate structure that goes through the end of the year, perhaps.
Sure.
Something like that.
Yeah, that's good advice. And so, and if we could look at that rate structure and have that included, Mr. Reed, and along with, and in the meantime, if staff could please reach out to the folks that are without a home right now, because, and let them know that the, that the City Hall Annex is available for them to consider in the meantime, because I think we're looking at another eight months until that place will be ready for the public to start using again, right?
Sometime in late August, that's what we're shooting for, or early September. Yes, sir.
Okay, so maybe more like four months. That's, yeah, that'd be great. Okay. Any other comments?
I was just wondering if we're going to go ahead and do this, some sort of policy or lease agreement, are we going to open up the Noble Center for the other days of, that are available throughout the week to other organizations who would like to go on a lease basis? Is that what we're doing here, is we're going to make it equitable to any other organizations on the other off evenings and for them to use it?
Ultimately, the answer is what you decide. So what we've done with the other meeting spaces, there's only two, is that any local agency has the right to reserve them and use them, pay a fee. So what I remember during my presentation on the update on the Noble Group Event Center is that when we talked about the event room itself, the number one priority is get the senior program from the grand hall into the, what is the current event room. And that's why we're speeding through the phase one improvements. They will be there Monday through Friday, nine to four. And so I recall some concern from council. Well, what happens if somebody rents that space? Do, who puts the tables up? Who puts them down? And so ultimately, council will give us direction. If you want the space to be rentable during the evening during the week, you can have a policy that says then the organization that comes in has to leave the room as they found it, which would be the way that the senior program does it. You all may say you don't want reservations during the week when the senior program is meeting, and that's all I mean, that you're going to give us direction. We'll give you options.
So I actually did, I was, worked as an event planner for several years. A lot of the facilities did rent out throughout the week to different organizations. They might have their meeting every Wednesday. In those agreements, one of the attachments to the agreement was an exhibit that showed the layout of the room and how they would leave it upon the end of the night. So they would have their chairs stacked or whatever, and it had to do with what the activity was during the day or in the morning the next day. And that was a part of the agreement. And then if that organization, or whoever rented it, did not leave it to those standards, then there was either a fine, or there was a three-strike rule, or they were in breach of the contract and they lost their rental. So that is what I would recommend. I think that there is a way to do that within keeping it, even if we have the senior program there during the day, making sure that it's set up correctly so that the senior crew does not have to come in and redo anything.
And I think that's a very equitable way of reserving it during the day for the senior program, making it available in the evening to other local organizations that would benefit from its use, and minimizing the impact to our senior program to fix the tables and the chairs the very next morning. So I look forward to the conversation.
All right. So you have a clear direction, right?
Yes, sir, and I will.
Need for a vote on this one? Okay.
I will reach out to the four organizations in the meantime, let them know when the discussion will be in front of council about reservation. And that was another direction here tonight. And that'll come to you in May.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reed. All right. On this next one, we have a process that we follow that is part of our city charter, that if a council member, or I think a member of the public, wants to hold a hearing to determine any express violations of the city charter, that we do have a policy, or we have a process to do so, which is where we would go and have the hearing as prescribed within the, within the city charter. And so that is what the vote is on for the next one by Councilwoman Sanchez-Stevens. And so just to give y'all some background, there was a document read in executive session at a recent council meeting. And so the way this process works is we're going to take a vote to determine whether or not there needs to be a hearing to go through this process per our charter. So I will call for a motion on this one.
I would actually like to have a little bit of discussion on it first, Mayor, just so that the public can understand and know the reasons why for a public hearing before going through into a motion.
That's not how this process works. You're not going to read off, like, or there's no due process that way, so this isn't a time for you to, to call out and make allegations or anything like that. This is.
I would like to defer to our legal counsel to see if this is appropriate.
What's that?
I would like to defer to our legal counsel to see if this would be appropriate. Mr. Wendlin, would it be appropriate for the public to hear the written statement so that they may understand why there is a public hearing being called?
Excuse me. Mayor and Council, the agenda item and the action item does ask for or designate discussion and action, and it's the legal opinion that I have, the discussion could include allegations. It's not the hearing itself, or the gathering of the evidence, or the deliberation of those
Right.
allegations. It's up to the policy in, of the city council, and hearing that as a matter of discussion, however, not initiating that hearing tonight.
Yeah, that's the way I interpret the charter, is that we will make a vote as to whether or not we'll have the hearing. I mean, this is not an opportunity for her to read allegations against me.
Mayor, all due respect, the public should understand why we are making a motion on a public hearing.
And that is what would happen if you were to.
In all government transparency, sir, we're not deliberating it. We're just setting forth what everyone on council has been privy to hear for themselves, so that the public themselves can hear the information, and then council can vote on that, and the public is aware as to why council voted the way that they did.
Yeah.
This is government transparency.
This is not how this works, and this is not the time or place to be, to be making allegations or anything.
Respectfully, Mayor, I do believe that is your opinion because it pertains to you.
Well.
And that's a little bit of a conflict.
Okay. Well, like I said,
This is my agenda item.
I run this meeting, and so.
You run the meeting, sir, however, this is my agenda item. This is my agenda item, and I'd like to have the discussion as it is written. The charter does say that council members can place items on the agenda that they would like to have discussed. I am honoring this, not to be a deliberation, but mere, merely just sharing the information that all of council already has.
Okay.
And I understand your apprehension.
This is not the time or the place.
I understand your apprehension, but the public deserves an explanation. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to call for a motion.
So I'm going to go ahead and continue to read because the mayor is not allowing me to have the proper discussion on my own agenda item. So this discussion portion of this agenda item is to bring forward the reason for necessary discussion at a public hearing, not here to deliberate. Should council approve that by an affirmative vote? So my plea is that, dear council- So my plea is that, dear council members, as a City of Sibolo council member myself, it is necessary to address any potential violations of the city charter and any potential overreach of or overstep of powers and authority by its elected and appointed officials as well as the city administration. Our legal counsel said it was okay. As elected officials, we each took an oath to uphold and defend the U.S. Constitution, the Texas Constitution, our charter, and the laws that govern us. This commitment is not symbolic. It is a solemn promise to act with integrity, protect the rule of law, and faithfully serve the people who entrusted us with this responsibility. It is our responsibility to make certain that violations are not and have not taken place, and it is our duty to consider discussion and/or any necessary hearings to determine any possible violations. The city charter is more than just a set of rules. It is the governing constitution of our city, established by the people to define how their local government operates. It reflects the will, values, and expectations of the community, outlining the powers, responsibilities, and limitations of elected and appointed officials. When a violation of the charter occurs, it is not merely a procedural misstep. It is a breach of the public trust and the foundational principles that guide our local government. The charter is a living document created by the people of the city to reflect their vision, values, and expectations, and it must be respected as such. It is the duty of the Legislative Council to address such violations openly and seriously, not only to ensure accountability, but to honor the authority granted by the people through the charter. Upholding the charter protects the integrity of local government and reinforces a foundational belief that government exists to serve its citizens lawfully and transparently. I would like to submit concerns of possible charter violations pertaining to the conduct and actions of Mayor Mark Allen. On February 11th and March 11th of 2025 council meetings, there were improper voting practices. The mayor cast a vote resulting in a tie during the removal of the city attorney, former city attorney, despite the charter limiting the mayor's voting rights to instances of a tie among council members. This action may violate Section 3.04 that states that the mayor shall not be entitled to vote as a member thereof on legislative or other matters, except in case of a tie. When the mayor shall cast a deciding vote, but shall have no power to veto of the city charter and may violate Section 22.037 of the Texas Local Government Code, which quotes, "The mayor shall preside at all meetings of the governing body of the municipality and, except in elections, may vote only if there is a tie," end quote, which restricts the mayor's voting privileges. The third-party interpretation concluded that the language of the charter was plain and unambiguous, that the mayor cannot vote except in a tie. His participation in voting was an express violation of the charter that takes the mayor is not entitled to a vote, which is expressed in our city charter. Furthermore, on City Council meeting December 3, 2024, there was improper conduct of city business while not closing executive session. The mayor refused to participate in a council meeting to address old business and proceeded with swearing in a new council member without proper parliamentary procedures, protocol, potentially violating Sections 3.04 and 3.05 of the city charter concerning the execution of duties and adherence to council procedures. His actions in participating in other agenda business that was voted by the legislative body to be conducted after old business was completed undermined and disempowered the voice and vote of the city council and elevated his duties in an abuse of power in a manner, an abusive power manner. Also, the mayor fails to properly, if a mayor fails to properly open or close portions of a meeting, especially executive sessions, it can lead to violations of both the Texas Open Meetings Act and potentially the Public Information Act. Failure to do so means the executive session was not legally convened, and any discussion during that time may be considered unauthorized and illegal. Knowingly violating Toma is a criminal offense, Class C or B misdemeanor. It can also result in civil liability, nullification of actions taken, or injunctions against the city or officials. Council meetings June 11th and 27th of 2024, there was disregard of council directives. The mayor gave the city attorney and city manager direction to facilitate a meeting with our school district without the attendance of the council-appointed subcommittee for the SRO ILA, contrary to the council's unanimous decision and motion. The mayor openly admitted he gave city staff direction to move outside of council's direction. The mayor does not have a legal or rightful claim to usurp the voting council's collective powers and authority, therefore not adhering to his figurehead of city and ceremonial purposes as a mayor, as well as upholding the balance of powers within our city's charter. These actions would constitute an attempt to veto. Other concerns for considerations relevant to Sections Texas Local Government Code 22.042 pertaining to the powers and duties of the mayor. It specifies that the mayor is the chief executive officer of the municipality, outlines their duties, including ensuring laws and ordinances are properly carried out. It states, "The mayor is a chief executive officer of the municipality. The mayor shall at all times actively ensure that the laws and ordinances of the municipality are properly carried out. The mayor shall perform the duties and exercise powers prescribed by the governing body of the municipality." On February 25, 2025 meeting, there was misrepresentation of information. The mayor informed the council that the Canyon Regional Water Authority Board required two elected officials, which led to the removal and appointment of board members based on inaccurate information. This is concerning because the mayor should actively be ensuring that all information given to our legislative body should be the most accurate to avoid any liability. The mayor weighed his duties lightly at this meeting. January 30, 2025, there was unauthorized delegation of duties. The mayor delegated his authority to former Mayor Stosh Boyle, a constituent, to represent the mayor of Sibolo at a meeting with other mayors and Congressman Quayar, where only elected officials or city staff were permitted to conduct negotiations and business related to the City of Sibolo. This bypassed the mayor pro tem and other tenured elected officials, potentially violating Section 3.04 of the city charter regarding the delegation of duties as the head of our city, and in his absence should have ensured the presence of the mayor pro tem and/or a tenured elected city council member. In conclusion, council members, recent events have raised serious concerns regarding the adherence to our city charter and the appropriate exercise of authority by the mayor. Specific incidents include unauthorized voting practices, circumvention of established council procedures, improper delegation of duties, and the dissemination of inaccurate information leading to misguided council decisions. These actions may constitute violations of Sections 3.04 and 3.05 of our city charter, as well as Sections 14, pardon me, as well as Sections 14.06, I believe I jotted that down. Oh, 14.04, pardon. As well as the relevant provisions of the Texas Texas Local Government Code and possibly meeting rules and procedures according to Toma and Public Informations Act. It is our duty to uphold the integrity of our local government that has been entrusted to us by the citizens of Sibolo. So therefore, I move to initiate a forfeiture hearing to discuss any potential violations of the city's charter and overreach of authority not granted by the rules and regulations granted by our charter to the to Mayor Mark Allen to determine appropriate actions as prescribed by Sections 3.04, 3.05, and 14.04 of the City of Sibolo's charter.
Okay, thanks, Norma. All right.
Can I get a second?
Per a request from Councilwoman Cunningham, we're going to break into executive session for, let's see, what was that? It was for consultation with attorney. Let's see, we will use 551071, consultation with attorney. The time is now 9:30 PM.
Thank you, Katie. All right. The time is 10:01 PM. We're going to come back from executive session on item number 13I. Can I hear a motion?
There was a motion on the table.
Okay, we got a motion on the table made by Councilwoman Cunningham, second by
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Sanchez.
And
Question?
And
Can we hear the motion read back?
Question? Can we hear the motion read back?
The, yeah, the motion. It was discussion action to call a public hearing.
Well, but that's not.
Sure.
Our motion included.
I, the motion was, I move to initiate a forfeiture hearing to discuss any potential violations of the city's charter and overreach of authority not granted by the rules and regulations. Granted by the city charter to Mayor Mark Allen to determine appropriate actions as prescribed by sections three point zero four, three point zero five, and fourteen point zero four of the city of Cibolo's charter.
Okay, and we have a second by Councilman Hicks. Okay. Please vote on your screens. Did you vote, Joel? Okay, motion fails five to two. All right, on to the next one. Jay, discussion action on the personnel policy one dot one dot twelve telework. Councilman Hicks.
I just bring this up. Good and short, I think it's time that we have back, everybody back to work in the office. Many companies and government agencies have gone back to having everybody there. We continually get asked to get more manpower, and I think that if you've got everybody working in the office helping each other, there wouldn't be that need. But then we also had. Breach of information that was at one time, so.
So, so it's your position that, that we do away with the telework policy? Is that what you're alleging or you're requesting? Okay, Katie, go ahead.
I wholeheartedly disagree. I don't think that's a surprise. Remote work has been found in numerous studies to improve productivity. Productivity is typically up by. Anywhere from thirteen to forty-eight percent depending on the study that you look at. People tend to work more hours when they're remote working than they do when in office. I can tell you right now, I'm in an interim role right now. I'm in office every day. The amount of disruptions while in office is astronomical. When you're at home, you're able to work, you're able to focus and not have people walk up every five seconds. If the job position. Is able to be done from home, there is absolutely no reason for you to be sitting in an office desk where you're doing the exact same thing as you could do at home. There's no reason for it other than control. If you have an employee who's not able to do their job remotely, some people can't. Some people need the constant person over their shoulder watching their work. That's why we have a policy in place that does allow remote work based on performance and based on supervisor review. If the supervisor thinks that their work is suffering, they are not as productive, they are not clocking in, or they're constantly unavailable when you call, or whatever the reason may be, you can tell, as a supervisor, you can tell if someone is working from home. They have deliverables. It may mean that you, as a supervisor, have to kind of shift the, what you're looking at when you're working with that employee, and you have to look at it from a deliverable standpoint as opposed to, I see you in the office, or whatever. But there are ways to measure that and measure the effectiveness. I think another perk to telework for the city of Cibolo is we don't pay great. We pay well compared to some other cities, but compared to the private sector, we're never going to compete. That's just city government for you. Telework is one of those perks that people will work in a job that pays less and they will stay there longer if they have the option for remote, even if it's not an option that they're able to have themselves. They usually will stay in a job, even if they're not taking the telework option or hybrid or whatever. They will stay in that job because they see that the organization values work-life balance and they value that individual employee needs. I work so much better remotely. Does it mean that I'm a terrible worker when I'm in office? No, I'm a great worker when I'm in office, too. But I can get a lot more done without distractions by being remote. My job, thankfully, is able to be done remotely. There are arguments that because not every person can work remotely, nobody should work remotely. I understand that. We have a police officer in here. He cannot do his job from his couch, unfortunately. Kind of need him in the car or at meetings or wherever. That, it, it comes with the job. There are other perks to different jobs. We have certain departments within the city where they get their uniforms purchased. We have certain departments in the city that get vehicles. We have certain departments within the city that get, or positions within the city that get cell phones. Every position is different. Telework should be treated the exact same way. If your position is one that allows or works with, works remotely, that is, that is able to be done remotely, we should do it. As far as data security breaches, everyone who works remotely has to follow the same I T policies. From my experience, we have a V P N that we have to connect to. Everyone has to log into it. Everything has to be secure. I T has ways of monitoring what is done on computers when you're not there. The, it just came out, the federal government has installed new software that they can hear everything that you say throughout the day, and you don't even know that they're listening in. They can monitor your conversations. So whether you're on a call or not, they have access to that. I don't know that Cibolo is to that level of surveillance, but I know that there is a way to monitor the work that's being done, what websites are being accessed, what files are being accessed, what's being downloaded and sent, what's being transferred. All of that is there. So the security is there. I, I don't see a reason why we should remove telework. I think it's beneficial. I think we should actually see about expanding the policy. I think right now they can have it most two days. I don't think that some of y'all are going to be happy with that, but telework is, it's.
More people are going away from it, but.
No, they, people are going away from it because, in my opinion, management is, some management and leaders are stuck in their ways and want to have that control. They feel the need to micromanage. They feel the need to have everyone in a row and have them sitting at their desks for whatever kind of satisfaction that they have watching them there dutifully working. If you have people in the office, they show up right on time, they leave right on time. You have a remote worker, they're likely working through lunch and just snacking throughout the day. They're likely not taking as many vacations. They're not taking as much time off. For me, if I have a doctor's appointment, my doctors are in this area. My office is an hour, hour and a half away. So if I'm taking off for a doctor's appointment and I'm in office that day, I'm taking at least half the day off. I'm not going to leave the office, drive an hour here, go to my appointment, drive an hour back to sit for another two hours, then to drive another hour home. I'm just going to take the day off. So less work is getting accomplished with that. Whereas if I'm here, I take my hour off for my appointment, I'm back at my desk, and I'm back working. So with all of that said, I approve of telework, and I'm glad that we have that as a policy here. I think that it helps us show that we are moving with the times. Yes, some offices are going back to in-person work, but even the federal government that said we're all going back in person, they're starting to send people back remote. So it's, it's kind of the, the way that, it's only way to be competitive right now.
Thank you, Katie. Councilman Mahoney?
Well, I'll be short. I'm in favor of telework as an option, and our policy only, I think, allows two days a week. It's, it's.
That's, that's correct. So sixteen hours a week. Yes, sir.
I see that as pretty restrictive, and I, I trust the supervisors and the department heads to know what their people are doing and to decide when it might be appropriate to limit that even further. I, I think it's a good idea.
Councilman Roberts?
I'm definitely in favor of it. It's, our telework policy is probably one of the more restrictive, I would say, of a lot of companies with the two days a week. Personally, I am more productive at home when I do work, simply because you don't have the volume of people coming in and out. You can actually carry on a phone conversation without three knocks on the door and people walking in and, can you do it all the time? No, you can't. As a people manager, you have to be there. You, you do. There are some positions that just do not qualify for telework. But I think you've done a great job as our leader of the city to manage that process with your department managers in that aspect. So definitely in favor of it, and it is one more recruitment tool that we do have available that doesn't cost us money and actually probably makes us more productive.
And Randy, if my memory serves me correctly, I think you've kind of changed your tune on this. You know, it's since the time that we voted on this back at the Noble Group a few years ago.
Yeah, I believe the very first vote, I was against it, and then I talked with a lot of the city employees and everything, and it, it truly is a benefit, and it's something that they need to be able to, it's a recruitment tool. It is, and it's an improvement on their life quality.
Yep, thank you, Randy.
So, yeah, and after that first little bit, then I did turn around on that, and I'm still firmly for it.
Thank you. Jeff, anything on this?
So since I worked for the federal government, yes, we brought a lot of people home, but we have scaled that back. We do have exceptions to policy. I will say there is value added to having people meet in person, but especially in our department, we schedule that around people when they don't have their telework days. So I do know the few folks that work for me that do telework. They absolutely are more productive when they're at home. I'm actually kind of shocked. When I log into my computer and I get home, I still see they have the green light on, and I'm still getting emails at five or six, seven o'clock at night. So my opinion, I leave it up to staff, and if it becomes a problem, deal with it. If it's not a problem, keep pressing.
Donetta, anything?
Well, you would think if anybody agrees with telework, it'd be me being handicapped, but I, I, I'm not opposed to it, but I do think there needs to be limitations put in place because some people don't actually work when they're home. Some people would wash their clothes instead of work, working. And so you gotta, you gotta really trust that supervisor that's in charge of them. But, I mean, we have the policy that only allows sixteen hours a week, so we gotta trust.
Thank you, Donetta. And, you know, and I also have been a fan of teleworking for a number of years, ever since the pandemic. I think that was kind of the opportunity for America to see how productive people can actually be from home. I know prior to twenty twenty, people used to, you know, have maybe Fridays to work from home or something like that, and it was kind of, people would chuckle a little bit, like saying, oh, yeah, you're working from home, you know? But I think that once everyone was forced to work from home and then prove how productive they could actually be, I think that's when executive management started to, to really take it seriously and say, okay, you know, these folks really can get work done from home. And so I, I think it's something that is a good idea for us, and one of the reasons that I like it that no one else brought up, office space. We don't have enough space for as many employees. I mean, as we're growing as a company, or as, I'm sorry, as a city, and hiring more employees, it's important for us to, we're going to run out of office space. And so I think it makes sense for people to be able to work remotely for those positions that it makes sense. I mean, like, like others said, obviously, the police can't, you know, arrest people from home, so they gotta, maybe they can fly the drone from home. I don't know, but that's about the only thing I could think of. So, all right, do we have a motion on this one? Or actually, yeah, it looks like we have an action attached to this one as far as on the personnel policy for telework. Did you want to make a motion on this one, Joel? No motion? Okay. Katie, any motion? Good. Okay, all right. So we'll let that one go. All right, next up is Kay. Discussion on the local C B D shops that sell T H C vape canisters and hemp products with a higher percentage of T H C than is allowed by the state law. Councilman Hicks.
I'll bring this up because I've had a officer approach me on this one. I've also had a couple of, of citizens that have gone to some of these vape shops. If you, if you search for consumable hemp products as a type of, of a license, you, you'll find that by the city, the business, et cetera, you'll find that the ones that we have here in our city aren't, they don't, they don't have the licenses they need for the, some of the product that they have. I don't know if y'all were looking at, I, I know that I had asked Chief to go and, and get us the summary reports that he did this weekend. If you look at some of these drug violation, I don't know if y'all know the address, but you see these drug violations, minor possession of tobacco product or thereof.
Now, these are reports of, of, like, like the crime, the crime blotter from the city of Cibolo. Is that what you're referencing?
Yes, sir.
And Mayor and Council, Mr. Hicks just referring to what you have in your packets in the council meetings, yes?
And, and so if you go and you look through there, you've got more and more people that, I, I have one individual that went, and he tested it. He's able to go and he can test it. It, it comes back. One of them was thirty percent T H C.
And when you say one of them, what do you mean? Like a bag of flour or like a gummy or what? What did he test?
Actual stuff that they sell as hemp product.
Now, when you say stuff they sell, what specifically are you talking about?
The hemp product. No, it's whatever. He just brought it to me. He said that the hemp product that they brought, he tested it, came back thirty-seven, thirty-six percent. And I know that it's supposed to be only three percent, is it not, Chief?
Yeah, please, Chief.
And I, I'm here to help y'all because if we've got issues, I, I would like, because, you know, going through this blotter, and I don't know if y'all know what thirteen hundred F M eleven oh three is, happens to be still high school when you look through that. And you've got kids getting popped for different items all the time. But I know that if you go and you look up and you, there, there's a state agency that you can go and you can type in and see if they've got the correct licenses that they're supposed to. They're not listed as being able to have the license to be able to sell those type of hemp products. So I just brought it up. I, I want to help y'all because I've got citizens that are coming to me saying, hey, they're, they're selling this stuff that isn't supposed to be being sold here in Texas without a special license.
Okay, Chief?
Yeah, what I would say, Chief Edric Anderson for the record, but, so we did some research on this, just looking, and what I did was I, I spoke with our Guadalupe County Narcotics Task Force. I've got a background in narcotics from my past previous career. And what I will say is that when speaking to the task force, we have had no either complaints or anything that we can elicit back for hemp products from any of the smoke shops that have been above the three percent requirement for hemp products or T H C products that are being sold from any of our smoke shops. I've also talked with the district attorney in Guadalupe County, and we haven't had any prosecutions or complaints related to that. Now, I think it's, it's interesting if we want to look at their licenses and whether or not they have the appropriate license to be selling that, that product. I mean, I'm pretty certain that's something we can work with code enforcement to see. But I just wanted the council to know, when, when I first saw this, I haven't seen anything that's been above the illegal limit. Does that mean it's not out there? Or the police department haven't stopped anybody with it? Certainly not. But I would really depend on our narcotics unit, who we, we had an officer on that narcot, narcotics unit who got a vacancy there, that absolutely investigate these. So typically, even when you were dealing back in the day, when you were dealing with other products, that was being sold from some of the smoke shops, a lot of times we're getting those through complaints. So when it first came up, Councilman, that's the first thing we did. Have we had any complaints? Have we had some citizens say that our smoke shops are selling something above the legal threshold? The license, that's something we would have to visit those shops to determine whether or not they have the appropriate license to sell. But I think that would be more of a code enforcement entity versus the police department showing up there.
And did, did they have to get a special license in order to?
There are certain licenses that they have to have to sell those. A lot of this came out of Plano. I know the police chief, I spoke with him last week. He did have a lot of sales that were coming out of those areas, but they were actually, typically when these things happen, a purchase can be made, right? And you can actually test the product. That, those products in Plano were being tested by their units, and it did come back above the legal threshold. For us stopping somebody on the street, I mean, literally, you'd have to have a citizen say, yes, I bought this product here, it's tested, but how do we know was it, was anything manufactured or touched before then? It's a lot that goes into that. But from our smoke shops, we haven't had complaints of that, and we haven't had any arrests for any suspects with illegal sales from those above the legal threshold.
Councilman Mahoney? Councilman Mahoney?
Chief, do you know if they have a license they have to display in those retail places? The state, you know, license, just like for a hairdresser and a dentist and everything? If the state regulates them?
Yeah, I won't propose to say what kind of license, because it's not really something that, as a police officer, I've ever really enforced. I know there are some licenses they have, but for what type of products? I mean, literally, it's something we can look into. But I think as a city, if we think they are selling products that they're not licensed to have, I mean, that's really a simple visit for us and working with, you know, whether we're going to work with, you know, TABC on this, to determine whether or not they're selling the products that they're licensed for.
That's what I was wondering, if it's a TABC priority, or is there some other part of the regulatory system now that, that sort of leads the charge on that, to go around and inspecting these places? I don't know.
Yeah, would be something I can do some further research on. But when I first saw the item, I thought that we had complaints about a Pacific Smoke Shop or somebody selling something above the limit. Yeah, we, like I said, we haven't been able to determine it. We haven't had any prosecutions or nothing from the narcotics unit.
Would it be a possibility to maybe do some detective work and some undercover items, maybe just to double check? Randy?
Yeah, we can always look at that, and I'd love to have some conversations with you. But yeah, we certainly could. I mean, obviously, I would lean on the task force for that, to determine whether or not that's something they're looking to. When I talked to the commander, he said we haven't had any instances of that. So again, when those things typically happen, a proactive measure is taken to start looking at those particular smoke shops, investigating them, getting evidence to determine whether or not we tested, and we actually see products that are becoming above the legal threshold. Questions?
Any other questions for Chief? Okay. Thank you, Chief. All right. On to M, discussion on responding to an allegation concerning council during public comment on March 25, 2025 council meeting. Councilman Roberts?
My apologies for trying to do that earlier. I had not read all the way down the agenda because I knew one of them had disappeared that I had put on there. This is a reference to a letter that Councilman Hicks read from TG Benson that was read into the record. It accused myself and Mr. Allen, of, Mayor Allen, of compromising the voting process and manipulating our rankings, ultimately giving us the disastrous legal representation we just endured. That was totally untrue. The record, anybody can get that now. It is for public information. If anybody from the public wants to request it from the city secretary, they may. Yes, and I have a synopsis, too, typed out. So for Hyde Kelly, Mayor, you gave the bottom ranking for that.
Right.
And I gave the next one up.
The lowest ranking, and we were alleged to have given him the best, you and I?
Exactly, exactly.
Imagine that.
In contrast, we gave the highest ranking to Frank Garza's firm.
Frank's firm, right.
And that was a tie. It's very, very disappointing that when someone like that sends a letter to undermine my credibility. I really, I had to listen to that several times and request a copy of it to reread. Very, very disappointing. I am just speechless of it. We, I think we went through the process properly. We did everything right. Obviously, the numbers speak for themselves, and like I say, they are available for anybody in the public to get. And that's it.
Katie, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify, ooh, this is very loud. Several times, I stated that TG and I had scored Hyde Kelly the highest, multiple times. So I don't know, I don't recall hearing that you and Mark had scored him the highest. That was not my understanding of it. I may have not heard that.
Wasn't you who said it, Katie?
No, I know. You're saying that it was in something else. But TG also said that he and I had scored it the highest when he was on council. So I'll go back and re-watch it. I'm not trying to call you a liar. I just want to confirm that it was said several times. It was said several times that TG and I had scored it the highest.
Comes back around with this to have Councilman Hicks read, which, as McLaughlin says, just puts it into a whole different tone and perspective when you have another council member advocating for one that didn't get reelected. But with his processes, and that's just, that's just not appropriate.
Is that it, Randy?
Yes, sir.
All right. So no, no action on this one? Okay. All right. On to N, discussion action on the end time of council meetings. Councilman Hicks?
This keeps flip-flopping between Joel and I.
I'd like to make a motion to do away with end time.
Yes.
Because we are the governing body. We can, we can end the, I'm not taking away your responsibilities up here presiding, presiding over it, but we've got to do away with it because, once again, I'm not going to get to five or six of my items.
Well, three of them are our normal ones, like the council members.
I understand, but we're still not...
So we're really missing out on two items is what we're missing out on. Okay. Wait, did someone make a motion?
Yes, Joel made a motion.
You made a motion to get rid of, so, I mean, I don't know if there's other council members that want to be here all night, every, you know, every time.
Nobody wants to be here. Mayor, I'm not, believe me, I've been coming to these since '06, '07, and there's been times where they were here until 1:00 and 2:00 in the morning. I'm not asking for that.
No.
But whenever we chain our hands, and then we can't finish our, and then it gets placed on the next agenda item, which I was told that it's going to be...
All right, it's 10:29, so we'll take a vote. All right.
This has also been, this item itself has been on the agenda probably six times. And this is the first time we're getting to it. Like, this is a problem. Nobody wants to be here late at night. I especially don't, but we have to be able to get stuff done.
I'm going to have to.
Jeff? I don't know if it's going to make much difference at this point.
Completely understand, and I am fully in support of not having a hard stop at 10:30 because that has prohibited us doing business. I'll go ahead and vote yea, but I'm fearful that that will turn into, since there is no time limit, that we will have council members hijack certain agenda items in grandstand for 20, 30, 40 minutes.
To your point, I mean, that's why I was wanting to get to O, but we're too late to get to O.
Okay. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
No. Point of order, point of order. We just voted not to...
That doesn't pertain to this meeting. This meeting has a 10:30 stop time, Norma.
Okay.
So I want all of my agenda L, O, P, all back on the agenda for the next one.
Who made the motion to adjourn? Randy? We have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Hearing two, I guess we are adjourned.